In Aggieville, we think there could very well be an opportunity to consolidate and put a smaller number of larger containers in place that are still accessible to the businesses. And this is certainly something, by the way, I do want to point out, this is something that would have to be part of implementation. I can't say we know exactly what this configuration looks like right now, but we have seen this be an effective way to continue providing good service to businesses and then reduce the frequency that trucks have to come into that area and make collections. And you can see on the right, there's an example of what a kind of a centralized, more compactor style of container. That's another difference when you go to consolidate your containers. A lot of times, you can get a compacting unit in there, which has quite a bit larger capacity on the right than compared to a typical just open top dumpster, which has no compaction, which are all those containers on the left. Now, let me be, let me be clear. It's not like there aren't disadvantages to going exclusive, and we think it's really important to be clear-eyed about how customers and businesses might think of, you know, going from a system where right now, they've got a choice of who they want to hire to provide service, to a system where they're going to be stuck with a single service provider. And we definitely hear this, and I think it's important for stakeholders and elected officials to be, you know, fully clear that going to exclusive collection will eliminate the ability of businesses to change haulers if they don't like something, you know, and that can be an issue. And I think that's, that's an important part of outreach and communication when looking to go this route. Certainly, we think if you do a procurement appropriately and establish a good management framework for that contract, that a service provider should provide good service because they've got an incentive to do so under contract. So it's not like suddenly service goes downhill, but that's certainly a consideration of your business. And of course, an exclusive arrangement does typically require some kind of a franchise or contract manager, and it could, it could also get into some kind of revenue recovery, some kind of upgrades. We'll get into that a little bit later. You know, the third bullet on this slide, in terms of a loss of business for existing haulers, if you hearken back to the map that we looked at at the outset of the presentation, Aggieville is a small enough geographic region that while certainly there will be private businesses that lose collection business, if Aggieville goes exclusive, our sense is it's not a big enough area to truly impair the business prospects for any of the current service providers. Now, if you were going to look at a citywide exclusive change, that might get into a situation, and we've, we've had that situation as well on a much larger geographic scale. So yeah, certainly, if you've got five or six businesses serving the region now and go exclusive, a couple will lose out, but it shouldn't be a death blow to any businesses out there. So I think that, I think that's important, and I think it makes it maybe a little clearer to think about. So I guess the last comment that also has to do with existing business arrangements, there may be some contracts in place with the current private hauling community and their customers. And so certainly in, in the implementation path, it would be necessary to anticipate that businesses may have to, you know, close out a contract with a private hauler before they might be able to convert over. There, there just are some considerations on letting contracts expire and managing that process. So I'm going to pause there again, because I just finished the, kind of the discussion of exclusive collection. And Cynthia, I always invite you that if I've missed anything, I always like you to let me know before I go on to non-exclusive.
I just, I think there was only one instance that there was maybe a contract in place for one container that was known of when we had the meeting with the advisory board.
So yes, and I think that goes to having some sort of outreach with the businesses, with the Business Improvement District, so that they know something, you know, if you go this route, it's all about the communication and getting out ahead. I think if you can give everybody enough lead time, that's not typically a problem. It's going to be a long-term issue. So, all right, so I feel like I should pause and ask the commission and anybody else if, if they had any questions at this point, or if I should just continue. Because I, anytime I talk this long in front of a computer, it just feels weird, because I actually can't see anybody because of the way PowerPoint is set up through a virtual phone call. Everybody good?
Yeah, I have, I have one question, and maybe Cynthia answered it, I'm not sure. How many haulers are currently being used in Aggieville? Did you say one?
No, I think there were five or six. It's on a, one of the earlier slides.
Oh, okay, I must have missed that, sorry.
As far, as far as existing contracts, I believe there was only one container that was known to have been under, with a contracted hauler. The rest are like at-will, they could change at any time.
Okay, I misunderstood. Thank you.
No, that's okay.
Thank you, Cynthia. So, having, having talked about the benefits and disadvantages of exclusive, I'd like to do the same thing for non-exclusive collection, which is the system that is, that exists now. And what I would say is, is the current system where there are multiple providers, you know, it's, it's pretty loose. It kind of leaves it to the open market. It leaves it to individual transactions between hauling companies and the local businesses in the Aggieville district to provide the services. So is it working? Yeah, it's working. I think things get cleaned up. But as I think we heard at the outset, there are, there are challenges with a non-exclusive service. However, the city may decide that maybe we do stay non-exclusive. So, all right, so you know, what, what would that mean? So it would essentially mean somehow finding a way to continue allowing the existing hauling community to continue serving the Aggieville district. So some of the other aspects of it, though, you still could, even with a non-exclusive system, it certainly would still be possible if there was some confederacy of the businesses in the district and/or working with the city to look at the service locations and container types. In other words, you could still do container sharing in a non-exclusive system. It just has the added challenge of having to be driven from the city and from the ABA, and then having to select a single provider out of the multiple providers to provide the service. In other words, it can be done, it's just messier and more complicated. Another aspect of non-exclusive service is typically, and this is what's happening now, is that the haulers that are serving their customers, they're, they're responsible for billing and collecting revenues. I didn't mention this specifically, but a lot of times, if a city goes to an exclusive system, that can very well imply the city getting into essentially, you know, being the middle man, getting charged for the service by the single exclusive hauler, and then in turn, having a revenue mechanism to charge the businesses getting the service. We'll come back to that. I should have, I actually should have mentioned that in talking about exclusive provision. But if you stay multiple haulers, it's likely that that would remain, each hauler just billing their customers. So if you had a shared container in a non-exclusive system, there would most likely be some obligation maybe of the city to step in and be the shared container owner and get the bill for the shared container, and then the city would probably have to figure out how to bill perhaps the businesses using the shared container. You know, something else that can come into any, whether, whether it's an exclusive contract or franchise or non-exclusive, is the notion to add a franchise fee. I'm introducing that term for the first time. And essentially, a franchise fee is some percentage that's typically assessed to the hauling companies doing business in the region. And it reflects the fact that those hauling companies, excuse me, are, you know, they're driving over city streets, you know, they're, they're using city resources. And so a franchise fee, and we've seen franchise fees around the country from very small, a couple of percentage, all the way up to pretty high, you know, 20, 25%. You know, it's not necessarily the most popular thing in the hauling community, their business community, but you could look at having a franchise fee, whether non-exclusive or exclusive. But, but I think ultimately, our sense is that the status quo is not working with multiple haulers. So at a minimum, if there is a desire to keep multiple haulers, revisiting some of the requirements in the ordinance, revisiting how this, you know, how active a central manager the city might be to get both the container design and the service levels you need, that's a little more of an uphill battle when you have multiple haulers. And, you know, just, you know, going back to the, you know, the photographic comparison, you know, the non-exclusive system, that's what you have now. You still are going to have, even if you can probably convert some containers to shared, it's going to be harder to do that. So odds are that you're likely to continue to have more smaller containers, and therefore, multiple vehicles, you know, coming into that area at different times of day, into the same alley, into the same parking lot. So in some regard, leaving that area open to multiple haulers doesn't address some of the issues that we think we heard and that we understood. However, you know, let's, let's talk about benefits and disadvantages. You know, exactly the opposite. If you have multiple haulers and a business has a hauler, they don't like the service, hey, they can fire that hauler and go get another one. And so, so on some level, that seems like a really great opportunity that you would want as a business owner, is the, the opportunity to select a provider that's going to give you the service you want. And certainly, if you keep the system you have now, it shouldn't be much impact. I think, I think the hauling communities, you know, they'll continue providing the services. It probably keeps the city, you know, less in the business or almost out of the business and not getting as involved. So, you know, certainly, those are, those can be considered benefits under the status quo. So disadvantages, I think, not surprisingly, if you are duplicating the same, different trucks doing the same routes, it's a, it's a less efficient, higher-cost system. You know, we've talked a little bit about, it's harder to manage the container types and container locations in an efficient way. If you have multiple collectors, you would need to have a strong central manager to really, you know, set up the containers and figure that out, and then hire one of the companies to service the shared containers. We think, while certainly it's not a big service area, there are some kind of environmental impacts of having multiple heavy trucks in terms of, you know, air emissions and payment and safety. And it can make accountability and enforcement and overall health and sanitation a little bit more, a little bit more challenging. So I think we've, I think we've hit on all of these. And, you know, again, these are, these are qualitative. So to address some of these, we think that if you, if you keep multiple haulers, it's likely that you would need to go through your ordinance, number one, and, and, you know, beef up what some of the requirements are. And there are different mechanisms for licensure and for permitting hauling companies to provide service, you know, within a certain region. They can be a little, you know, a little more nuanced to put in place, but that could be an option, depending on, you know, how you prioritize what is important for serving the Aggieville Take a, take a breath, because the, the next thing I want to talk about a little bit is just to, I now want to shift gears and talk a little bit about the mechanics of the solid waste collection business. You know, I mean, we've talked qualitatively, a lot of haulers, not very many haulers, but one of the things that I think is just an important, you know, for kind of education in terms of how the solid waste industry provides service and prices service, this is laying the groundwork a little bit for, for thinking about the mix of different containers and receptacles that might be in place. And so first of all, I want to tell everybody, you don't, don't look at the specific numbers. The numbers aren't important. But I do want to describe industry standard pricing conventions for a company that's collecting the dumpsters, you know, those, those four-yard and six-yard dumpsters that they, if you think about the trucks that have the big forks on the front, the front-load trucks, container service is the collection of dumpsters, and it's actually very economically rational pricing. Pricing tends to follow how big is the container, because the bigger the container, the more trash it holds. And so that's going down the left-hand side. I'm looking at the table on the left here. You can see that, you know, there are different container sizes. You could have a cart, you could have a two-cubic yard, a six-cubic yard, eight, whatever it is. And then the second thing that impacts pricing is how many days a week, or how many times a week do I have to come pick this container up? So that's the frequency. So that goes across the top. And again, don't look at the numbers specifically, but as you can imagine, the bigger the container and the higher the collection frequency is, the more you're going to pay. So having a whole bunch of little containers that have to get picked up four and five days a week is about the most expensive way you could serve the Aggieville district. You know, you don't have to, you don't have to necessarily, you know, do a lot of math to, you know, hit that conclusion. So conversely, a roll-off service is a larger container, and it could be a container that, that has a compaction unit integrated into it that's going to compact wastes. And typically, it's going to be a much larger capacity. And the pricing for that is also very economically rational, because if somebody's going to go pick up that box, they've got to send a truck and a driver out and go lift the container up and then go dump it, and then go put it back, or maybe they swap out and empty. But that's a much more efficient and cost-effective form of collection to move a large volume of waste. And I just think this is important, because this is kind of the, this is kind of the quantitative part of thinking about a configuration of containers that might both efficiently and safely and effectively serve the Aggieville district. I think having some of that background, being aware of that is important. Now, here's where it gets a little tricky. And again, there's a table. I don't necessarily want you to look at the numbers, and those are not actual rates. We have not done any actual math or rate calculation specifically for Aggieville. But where it gets challenging is that, let's say you have one great big shared container that every single business in all of Aggieville uses. Well, you can imagine, because of the mix of businesses, some are big and some are small. Some might be restaurants that have a lot of food waste. Some might be retail stores that have hardly any waste at all. There's a whole mix of different types of businesses and different waste generation profiles. So when we have worked with other cities around the country that have established this kind of an exclusive service, it's typically necessary to think ahead and think about a revenue realization model that, let's say, the city of Manhattan gets into managing this, you may be getting charged these rates by the hauler, because the hauler charges for the services they provide, but you may need to develop a revenue recovery framework so that you can fairly charge the businesses and recover the cost of those services. And so there are some, some models, some templates that we have developed and getting help with, or that you could develop on your own, that use some generation rate assumptions by different business types to essentially come up with the revenue recovery side of having an exclusive provider with shared containers in the downtown area. And again, none of this is, none of these numbers are exactly right, but I think what we're trying to convey is that there are good, successful frameworks, because at the end of the day, you want to provide good service to your businesses, and it needs to be, it needs to be fair. You know, you don't want to be overcharging, undercharging, and it's, it's got to accommodate just the different generation profiles down there. And we think that there are some models out there to do that. And I guess a couple of other financial management, and this, again, is kind of going to depend on whether it's exclusive or non. You know, who, who's going to do the billing? You know, do you leave the haulers billing the customer? That's probably, if you just have multiple haulers, that's probably easier. An indirect billing is, this is one that's interesting to me, you know, where the hauler, you might have a single exclusive provider under contract, for example, with the city, and then that way, the city's getting charged for all the services, but then in turn, the city might have to revisit some sort of revenue mechanism to recover those costs from the businesses. And I think we already have, and I actually would pause, because Cynthia could probably say it better than I could, but there is already a fee structure in the Business Improvement District. So this is a concept that I think is working well. In some regard, it's based on square footage. Most likely, we might want to expand how that fee is developed for solid waste revenue recovery. So I don't feel compelled to, to go read through the bullets under direct and indirect billing, but if we have questions about that, we can come back to it. All right, so where does that get us? So before I plow ahead, let me offer this comment. We have, have found, and we always work with our clients on this, we oftentimes are okay offering what I, what I call a consultant recommendation, but I have to say, you know your, your stakeholders, you know your constituency, you have a much better read of how things go, and we are not so arrogant as to think that our consultant recommendation is, oh, you have to do this. But I like to share a consultant recommendation, kind of from the technical best practices standpoint of the waste industry. And believe me, we have made recommendations for clients. Not all of them fly, because there are local reasons that they don't. But we feel like, you know, if we're going to do our best for our clients, it's how could we really put the best technical outcome in place to solve the needs as best as we can understand them without actually being a resident or a business owner or an elected official, you know, there locally. So with that, with that background, I would tell you that, that kind of the consultant recommendation, kind of best practice is to go the exclusive provider, going that direction, which you could, you could franchise or contract. And the franchise is sort of a lower, a lower level of involvement by the city. But if you go exclusive, you're going to open up, we think, a lot of benefits, better management, lower costs. However, there's a couple of steps to going that direction. So first of all, you would need to just lay some groundwork. You need to inventory the current service levels, the current, the current containers, how frequently are they served, what businesses are using them, because there's a whole step to then consolidate and determine a plan to, to be as efficient as you can, once you know you're going the route of a single provider. So part of the implementation is doing a good job, kind of designing the collection system that's going to serve the district. So once you've done that, and you've, now maybe you've gone from, Cynthia, I can't remember, it was 80 containers, I think, maybe you've gone from 80 down to 40, or 80 down to 30, or even 80 down to 70. But you've done that step, then you can undertake a competitive procurement that lays out the, the service needs of the district, and the container types, and the locations, and the estimated frequencies. And at that point, go out to the market and, you know, get, get some competitive pricing for a single provider to do that. And then the beauty of that is you can build pretty good monitoring and enforcement and reporting, and, you know, just performance monitoring into that contract. So in the, and then in parallel, while you're doing all this to secure the services, you could be developing essentially a revenue mechanism that, let's assume the city did the contracting and would need to recover the revenue and kind of manage this, you could then be developing a generator-based rate structure that would, you know, show businesses, hey, based on the type of waste and the amount of waste you generate, there'll, there'll be a couple of levels for us to recover the cost of the service. But again, the cost should go down once you go exclusive. It should go down when you go exclusive, and it should go down again when you consolidate containers. So there are a lot of opportunities to cut excess costs out of the system going the exclusive route. And, and I think, I think that's kind of the high-level sense that we have, just based on, I think, successful programs that we've seen in other communities. And it would seem to us that that would be, you know, an opportunity worth considering in Aggieville. So where does that leave you? Where does that, where does that leave the city commission and the stakeholders right now? It seems that, I mean, the big one, elf in the room, is determining whether to go with an exclusive provider or not, because that, that's really the single biggest, you know, pivot point in terms of how you think about moving forward on this. So let's say, if you go non-exclusive, you probably have a little bit less to do, because you're revisiting some ordinances. But if you do decide to go the route of exclusivity, you, there's some discussion to be had about how strong of a contract, or maybe how loose of a franchise. There's a little bit about what form of agreement would you want to put in place for that exclusive provider? And then certainly, if you go to an exclusive system, there's going to be some transition needs in terms of, of getting out in front of that to your stakeholders, getting out in front of that frankly with the hauling community, so they can be prepared to be responsive, doing your, your financial due diligence and your homework on, on internal revenue recovery structures. And certainly, you know, I mean, we're big fans. If you can do that yourself, great. If not, you might need to get just some folks, you know, help out. I think we'd be happy to help. You know, other folks might want to help. But there's definitely a transition strategy and implementation period to do this, to get out in front of it all and handle it effectively. And I got to tell you, I've been talking way longer than I'm comfortable talking, just to a computer screen. So the good news for everybody is that gets me to my last slide, and I would love to take a pause and field any questions or have any discussions that folks, as they see fit. But thank you so much for your attention.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Any, any questions from the commission? We may want to take some public comments, then?
If, sure.
There's anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the topic? I'm sure Dennis will want to say something.
Maybe I've, I've beaten them into submission, talking so much. They, they're all comatose and can't actually respond, so.
Oh, Charles put his name down online. Good job. My name's Nicolette Unruh. I'm with Nico's Little Italy in Aggieville.
Nicolette, could you, sorry, excuse me, could you speak into the mic?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I apologize.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Could you repeat it? Because we couldn't hear you.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Nicolette Unruh, and I'm with Nico's Little Italy in Aggieville. We're at the corner of 11th and Moro. And just a couple of comments that I have relating to the presentation and the statements and thoughts. And obviously, we're brand new here. So I have not been involved in the 2017 or 2018 surveys of the community as a business particularly. I've lived in the community since, at that time, but I, I would suppose that some of the things that I have as a business owner is that I have concerns that are bigger than the cons and disadvantages that are stated in what the consultants are stating. So some of my concerns are about the safety and security of my staff members. If we were to consolidate trash in the Ville, granted, we are on the corner. I would guess that we would be lucky enough to have a consolidated trash area near us. However, I really don't feel safe sending some of my staff members even out to my trash can that is in my back parking lot. So that's something that's very concerning to me. If we were to consolidate and create a system, where would those trash containers be located? How are we going to keep our staff members safe? Is there going to be enforcement in a sense of like cameras? Or, I mean, how am I going to send a 100-pound girl out with a trash bag, more than just out my back parking lot, to a trash container that's going to be further than two blocks down from my trash area? I do feel that there are other options, which have been presented, that we could do a non-exclusive option and maybe look to pretty up the system and maybe enforce some things as far as maybe there can be enclosures for our trash containers that have to be maintained and put into just better repair than they're currently in. I will say that I hold my staff to a very high standard of like, if you drop trash, you're going to clean it up. I do know that there's other areas in the Ville do not, that do not do that. And so that obviously is something that we're concerned about and that we've been talking about far longer than I've been in Aggieville. But I do feel that there's other options, and I don't feel as though this option is necessarily the best route. I do think we need to consider and engage some other voices in this system and situation. And I do believe that you have done that, and I'm just new. But I don't feel comfortable with having consolidated trash where my staff members would have to walk down the streets and down the alleys. And I do think there's other choices that we could explore. So those are my main things. I made a lot of notes, but that's my main statements. It's just safety and security, and how are we going to keep our staff members safe in Aggieville? Because I don't want to have any of my staff members walking down those alleys. And I think there's better options.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I'm not sure if it's appropriate for me to, to make a comment. I thought that was a really, I think that's a really thoughtful and important point that, that the speaker brought up. And, you know, the thing that struck me is, and it, maybe I, I might have not been clear in, in talking about this notion of consolidated containers. Actually, one of the beauties of an exclusive system could absolutely offer that choice. I would imagine, I'm just hearing that comment from that speaker, I would imagine there are going to be other businesses who feel the same way, and who might need that very convenient service. service right out their back door for safety reasons. That's totally an option. That, that is, that, that could totally be built into the, the service to frankly meet the needs of businesses. But I thought that was just a really good point that the speaker made, so, so thank you for, for doing that.
My name's Charles Zentz. I am the general manager and minority owner of Tanner's Bar and Grill. Exactly like Nicolette said, I think that is our main concern as business owners, and every person and every owner and manager that I've spoken with, that is our top priority, the safety of our staff. Over 50% of my staff is female. I do not feel comfortable at them, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, taking trash out, a dark alley. Things happen, God forbid, none of us want that, but how do we protect our staff from that? So, yeah, that's, that's probably the biggest one. Outside of that, like game day weekends, and we know, not, and not only game days, graduations, we are so busy. And kind of that point, we produce a lot of trash. Myself and the businesses across the street, we are two of the smaller ones, but I would say that we probably produce more trash than a lot of the businesses down there. Now, on those days, we are, we're, we're slammed, from the moment we open practically to the moment that we closed. Logistically, I don't have the staff, I don't have the time to try to run trash, and we are running trash throughout the day, you know, two, three blocks down. The other thing with, with the cleanup, you know, I'm sorry, most of my, a lot of my staff are, they're young, they're in their twenties, they're, you know, they're college students. They're not going to break a bag and worry about cleaning it up. As much as I get on them about that, as much as we hold them accountable to cleaning that up, you know, if it's 2:00 in the morning, they're tired, they've worked a 17-hour shift, that bag breaks, as much as I yell at them or anything else, that's probably going to get left. So therein lies the accountability. Who, who, who cleans up after that mess? Same thing with the grease. I know one thing that had been brought up was the in-service, the in-store grease tanks and that. My store has that. We use that. It's fantastic. However, I still have a grease trap on the back of the building. We still have to use that. That grease just pulls from the fryers and things like that, and they come and pump it out. But any other waste grease, things like that, they still have to come get. We still have cat cans that comes, you know, every other month or so, to clean out the grease traps that are within the store. The third thing being, and I, and I think the map that shows Aggieville District as a small part of the city, I think that's misleading. Yes, we are a small, when we look from a geographical area, but what other business area is producing, in this case, what we're talking about specifically, waste? So if we have these private, small business trash haulers that are local, and they lose out on Aggieville, what, what does that do to their business? And then the last thing, we are one of those companies that I think has a really good contract with them. I don't know what everybody else pays, but I know I pay $400 a month, or, I'm sorry, $400 every two months, and my trash cans are emptied virtually every day, especially these game day weekends. We have two big trash cans that are full, Friday night, at least Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night. Saturday morning, Sunday morning, Monday morning, they're always empty. I never have any issues with B and L. They're always there, they provide a fantastic service. So we're opposed to having to, one, the safety of our employees having to haul this extra, just the extra for it. I mean, if we need tighter regulations, fine. We've, we've had our grease trap overflowed, and that was something that I addressed immediately with our greaser, our waste, or, with the people that pick, pick up our grease waste, they were there immediately. We, I went down myself, got kitty litter, got the, got everything cleaned up. We had no problems with that. We make the mess, we only intend to clean that up. I think that's kind of where we're at, and, you know, that's, that's a lot of what I've heard from other, other businesses and owners in the, in the district. So, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Dennis?
Commissioners, Dennis Cook with Aggieville Business Association. I appreciate these guys coming in and, and giving you their opinions. There's multiple people who have the same type of opinion on this. I can tell you that we've had, we formed a committee, and we've had numerous meetings with, with Kristen, with Jason, with, with city staff, so we can talk about this, and kind of go through these pros and cons of what's going on. And, you know, and we had five business representatives besides me, you know, in those meetings. And, and I can tell you, just kind of the, the attitude that we took with this is that, that option one, the, the exclusive, is, is a hard concept for us to get, get a handle on. And everybody was leaning towards the option two, the non-exclusive. We do recognize that we need to be cleaner, we need to be better. And if we can, if it's, you know, as, as we talked about it, it's either consolidate or, or regulate a little bit. And, and that's, and I guess that's the, the way we're leaning right now, is that, that's what we want to do, because we know we have a lot of construction coming up still. We're going to be closing streets, we're going to be doing a lot of different things. And eventually, we're going to get into the alleys. And we should just kind of push back and see where we are when we finally redevelop the alleys. But at this point, I think what we, what our general consensus was, was that the, the non-exclusive, but let's get a better handle on it. If we can, if we can figure out with the trash haulers we've got, if we can maybe minimize the, you know, the number of days, or the, or the times that they're in the alley, and then possibly we can get a street sweeper into these alleys on a, on a regular basis. That would make, that would make all the differences in the world. So we appreciate the effort, we appreciate what the consultants have, have brought to the table for us to think about. But our recommendation with working with the staff is to, is look at the, the non-exclusive and, and try to work with, with the haulers, do a better job. Let's, let's, let's clean it up that way, and maybe we can, we can find a better path for this.
Dennis, do you have any role in the current trash removal system in Aggieville?
Zero.
What is, okay, zero?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that's not, it's not part of their business improvement district funds, it's not part of anything like that. That's always been an independent decision. I know, here, when I first started with Aggieville, I had, I had to laugh when, when Mike Dodson was mayor, he told me that we don't need to wait until this whole vision thing gets done, just consolidate that and clean it up. And I go, must be great to be a general, and you can, and you can do stuff like that. I said, that's not really how it works. You know, and besides that, with, with Aggieville as, as a district, you know, we've got really four alleys that are the, are the, the problem, but we've got a lot of businesses that are outside of those alleys, that are outside of that, you know, and quite a few businesses. You take the businesses that are up on Laramie, that are going to be across from the parking garage, they're not really involved in this. You know, the businesses from the, from the, from the Quick Shop down to Insomnia Cookies, you know, you know, they're part of Aggieville, but they're not really part of this discussion either. So there's a bunch of that. You have some of the businesses, whether it's the, it's the new hotel, or the Starbucks, or the Popeyes, they've, they've got their own big container that's already fenced in. They're not really a piece of this. So there's, there's a whole lot of other things to consider. That's why the non-exclusive side seems to be the way for us to go. Our opinion.
But, but they're in the district?
Yeah.
So if we made a district regulation, I mean, we would be picking and choosing, is that, I mean, rather than making some district kinds of rules?
We are interested in cleaning, cleaning up Aggieville. The Chamber of Commerce, several years ago, went to Lincoln, Nebraska.
Correct. I was there, too.
You were there. And we were really impressed with their more student area, and the, the way that they have cleaned up their alleys and actually used them. Not just as transportation, but as, you know, we're making, putting, we're, we're developing pedestrian areas
Correct.
At the city's expense, out on the sidewalks and all these other things, but we have, but, and so far, we aren't doing anything with the alleys. And they are very much part of the, the system here. And it's not just the trash trucks, as far as I'm concerned, it's the beer trucks, too. I don't, there are times I can't get down an alley for an, over an hour, because there's a vehicle parked in that alley for, there at lunch.
Yeah.
And that's just not what I want to see happen.
I agree.
But then there are others, the cleanliness of the alleys, are you involved with that?
Well, we do, we, we try to, we try to clean those on a, on a regular basis, but they're, they're not, it's not as regular as what we're doing with sidewalks and trash barrels that are out on the sidewalks. We, a part of our BID, we, we do have somebody hired to do that, and then we will work in the alleys, but the alleys are, at this point, they're not, you know, they're not the front door, they're, you know, they're, they're a service. And so at this point, you know, we're, when, when, when we have the opportunity, like if I have somebody who's come in for community service work, we, you know, it's, it's alleys first. That's, that's where we go. But that can change, that can change in a couple hours, on how, on how that looks. And so, yeah, it's, you know, you know, with some of those pictures, you can see, when there's just, there's different, when there's, there's a lot of different ways of doing it. Some of them are great, they're right up against the fence, and they're, or, and they have a, they have a, you know, a swinging gate on them, or whatever. And then you got some that are just, you know, not like that. And, and, and if we could, if we could say, here's what we want, is we want these things to look this way, and you're, and you are a, a, a trash hauler, and, and you're in business in Aggieville, we just want to hold you to a different standard.
So all you can do is the, because you're employed by the businesses with a secession thing, is you can encourage, cajole, try to convince, but you don't have any ability to enforce?
No, not at all.
Uh-huh. And that might be where the city comes in.
Right.
Depends on how, you know, there are lots of models in other communities for trash service. In Topeka, I remember, there's a Shawnee County Trash Service. And you are, you, if you don't participate, it's fine, but you can hire your own, but it is consolidated, but not required. But most people just use the, that service just for trash. I don't know about downtown, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
I know about residential. So I know there are lots of other models, and, um, thank you, I, you've given us a lot to think about here. I do have some questions for the staff here before we close, but thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, Jason, did you have anything you wanted to present? Anybody else want to? I figured everybody's spoken that wanted to, so.
Well, I think Jason Hildreth, Deputy City Manager, Mayor Commissioners, just wanted to touch base a little bit. Dennis talked about where we're at with alleys, and we're going to be investing in alleys soon. If the fuse comes to fruition, TJ's proposed development, we will have to address the alley between North Manhattan and 12th Street, between Laramie and Moro. That will be the first and foremost. Now, we're probably a good year, year and a half away from starting that design, but it is an opportunity to look at the alleys. I appreciate Commissioner Morse's comment about the Haymarket area in Nebraska. Several of you have walked those areas. They've turned them into pedestrian amenities, rather than areas at which trash sits and leaks and creates a negative environment. We had a lot of participation in 2017 and 2018, over four, 5,000 people participated in surveys, and creating that pedestrian environment, including our alleys, you know, was a high priority. We're going to invest hundreds, if not millions, in our alleys. That's infrastructure that is ours, and is ours to maintain. There's a lot of overhead power lines, and there's a lot of access there. We need to regulate that truck traffic. You have seven haulers every day running down these things. It, it's your, it's our infrastructure. They're using it every day. I, I do think there's so many more perspectives than just the business communities. I'm not disrespecting their opinions, they're welcome to have them. I would probably have them if I was there, too, but there are thousands of people that walk down these things every year to access not only their businesses, but other businesses as well. They're not very sightly, they're unkept, and if you haven't been down them recently, I would highly encourage you to walk down them. They need, they need our attention. So what do we want them to be when they grow up? You know, we, we can leave them the way they are, and we can leave this unregulated, I don't think the environment's going to change much. Having Aggieville a much more pedestrian-friendly environment, very high on the list, and it's been that way for the last seven years. So I would really like to continue the conversation with Aggieville and the ABA. I think we were making progress. There are folks down there that want to see these things cleaned up, and we're really looking for that direction. And I, either we're going to continue to try to create an alternative that we can all agree upon, or if we're ready to move on, there's plenty of other things we can work on, just even in Aggieville. So we're just needing that direction this evening.
So I have a few questions for you, Jason. What about these issues that were brought up as far as safety and where they would be located?
Safety's huge, and that survey in the last seven years, research as well. We need to address lighting, we need to address the environment at which those alleys are for our pedestrians and the workers down in Aggieville. We've always made the connection between the parking lots that are on the outskirts, that a lot of employees have to go to, same for the parking garage. That thing will need to be lit, there will need to be cameras, and there needs to be security. On any given night, these folks behind me could probably tell you how many officers are in Aggieville. And they're there to keep people safe.
So I understand about the alley situation. I think they definitely need a lot of work. And as far as an enforcement, I guess I'm looking at, how much staff would it take? What kind of, what does enforcement look like? How do you, as you are, as we are working on improving the alleyways, how do you figure out where those containers go? So I think, I think those are the things I'm looking at, and listening to Dennis and Charles, as well as Nicolette, I think they, you know, brought up several good points, but the, to me, it still is, there's no enforcement. So even if we have new ordinances, policies, I don't know who would be enforcing that. Is that by complaint? Do officers go down there and enforce it? What, what does that look like? I don't know.
It is a matter of just how you're going to set it up. You go non-exclusive, which means you've got six or seven haulers down there. You're talking about code enforcement at some level. You could put that into zoning, but it probably makes more sense with code, to be able to drive through those and visibly see if the containers meet the regulations. You know, you could regulate the size of the container, you could regulate the fact that it doesn't leak. I mean, you could have a variety of different things that you could put in place for the non-exclusive, which would ultimately, more than likely, cost their haulers money, because some of them haven't updated those containers for a long time. They're in disrepair, they're, you get a rain, you get any, they're not sealed, crows are pulling trash out and dragging it into the alleyways on an annual basis. We're just a couple months away from that. So it's, it's one of those circumstances, either we start looking at this, exclusive or non-exclusive, you know, our desire is just to create a, a more pleasant area, a safer area, a more well-lit, and a, you know, even a beautified alleyway, like we've seen in, in other communities. Leaving it the way it is, is counter to the feedback and the input that we've received from the community.
That's not an option for me, to leave it as is. I, I am looking towards more of I, I am looking towards more of a city, city's role in it, more of a, I am looking at the exclusive piece to it, mainly because of so many, so much heavy vehicles, like you already pointed out, going on there, and as we improve it, if that does, if that traffic doesn't decrease, the improvements will only last so long.
If it was a private drive, and that was private property, we would not be in this room having this conversation. That occurs all around this community. With the thousands of people that walk through those alleys, use them like a sidewalk, we have to approach it and react from that environment. So I, again, I appreciate where the businesses are at, but I also think they need to understand everything around them is public, everything. The sidewalks, the driveways, the parking lots, the alleys, all of that is public. Public tax dollars coming down to this district, they're generating a lot too, and the TIF is capturing it all, and we're going to invest there for 20 years, hopefully 30 to 40 million dollars.
So what does it look like as far as cost? Not, with city staff and also getting all of this done, what does, what does a contract look like? If one of the business owners says it's $400 for two months, I believe was what he said, what does that mean to businesses? How do they pay for this?
And, and we are, we're a ways away from actually generating those costs and having those analysis, I, and this is where we left it with Dennis and the ABA and the group that he has put together. This evening is more about, are the alleys a concern? Do you want us to move forward with the ABA and develop alternatives? We didn't want to jump and assume and create multiple scenarios for you to consider tonight. It was more of a discussion of, is, are the alleys something you want us to continue to pursue with the district, to generate options that administration, ABA, its membership, can agree on to bring back to you all for consideration? If that's agreeable, we'll go do that. If it's basically, leave the alleys the way they are, we're not going to regulate, we don't want exclusive, and we'll go do something else.
No, that is not an option for me. Yes, I would, I would definitely look at doing something more closely aligned with what Aggieville also sees, but with the, some type of enforcement, more codes, more, some, something to clean it up. Clean it up, make it safe, and just making sure that what we are building is not, you can see what we are building and the improvements we are making are visually appealing, and, and it's recognizable, the differences are noticeable, the improvements are noticeable, and it does start with the alleyways. People do walk those alleyways, regardless of where they park, they walk in those alleyways frequently. So I think that's, that's very much a need, and of course, we've discussed this several times, and I've seen it in other communities, as Commissioner Morse pointed out as well. So I would rather lean towards more of those types of conversations.
Yeah, I got probably four quick thoughts. Number one, I don't want to see the city get in the trash business, period. Okay, so this idea of indirect billing and all that, forget it, because we will do nothing but make it worse. When government gets involved in trying to regulate, you know, business like that, it always ends up a disaster. So I'd just flat say, no, you'll, you'll never see me support that. Okay, we are not getting in the trash business if, if I have anything to do about it. I do think we need to do something with the alleys. So the city's role there is, okay, lights, you know, when we do the improvements, those kind of things. I think the other part of the city's role is, I don't have a problem with looking at developmental code and putting some things in there, like perhaps the idea of having those grease traps inside, and having the trash haulers, you know, suck it out so that it doesn't get dripped in the alleys, because that's one of the biggest messes down there. That, that, that I do think we can hit some of those regulations. And, and I do think we should force the trash haulers, there's seven of them in town, to provide a decent container. You know, we don't need a leaky container. So a lot of the things can be addressed by simply, you know, changing the Manhattan Developmental Code and saying, okay, here's what we're going to do. And, and I don't know about compactors, I really like that idea of a compactor, because then you'd make less trips. Then the last thing is, if you're, if you're going to try to consolidate, I'm going to have to lay that on Dennis and the business district. That's going to have to be the business owners down there, you decide what you want to do. And, and, and the only experience I have doing that, we, we tried it with our homeowners' association. Same, same logic as in the presentation, too many trucks going down the street, going to run over our kids, and all those kind of things, and we got together, and, you know, two people refused to do it, and so, fine, they kept their trash haulers, the rest of us consolidated under one, so now we got three trucks instead of seven. And, and maybe that's all you can accomplish initially, but, but go ahead and do that. But, but I think the business district has to take the lead on that, not city staff, because you guys are running it, and just like, you know, we heard tonight, the business owners know where the safety issues are, or how close they want the trash can, you don't need the city commission to tell you that. That, that's your business down there. But that's my take, you know, keep government out of small business, and let's let them run it, but let's contribute where we can, like with the developmental code, putting in lights. I don't have a problem with additional security cameras, you know, I, I like that for the safety standpoint, and if we could feed it all into the parking garage, and hopefully have the, the RCPD substation in there where, where the cops can, can look at that, I think that's all great. So there, there's a role each of us can play, but I don't want to see the city try to manage trash service, and if it starts in Aggieville, it could spread to the whole city, and that's just not a good thing.
Well, our homeowners' association, we brought that up, and they, two people immediately said, we love B and L, we ain't never switching for any reason, never, and so ours kind of went down the tank right away too. But, yeah, that, that one picture they had, I think it must have been kind of behind Redena's Stone Cold, and where you could see five dumpsters kind of surrounding the one, it looked like five dumpsters kind of surrounding the parking lot. Boy, if they could get that down to one big one, there's two or three or, or four more parking spots that you could maybe gain in some of those back, those off-the-alley parking lots. And I don't know if it's one of those things where some of the, the association could encourage some of the neighbors, okay, what do you guys think? Can we see about combining and maybe start doing it on a, people picking a, a half a block or their group, or there's those five right there, if they could agree on one, and maybe have one bigger dumpster, and just keep paying what they're paying now, ought to be able to, yeah, be able to provide the same level of service that they're getting with from five different companies. I think there's some things that we, we could do like that. Yeah, simple things like making sure that your dumpster doesn't leak would, would be the first step. I really don't want the code service people poking their noses around there all the time, because we're going to get more complaints about out-of-control code service people, but I realize somebody has to do something, but I would like that to be restrained to some degree with some common sense enforcement. But I, I do agree, we should move forward, probably on the non-exclusive thing to start with, see if we can, what we can agree upon, what incremental changes and improvements we can make, and then at some point, if we get forced into bigger changes because of the, of fuse, then we'll just have to move a little faster.
I'd just like to, several things you've talked about tonight. We have the system we have now because we have not enforced anything, or the very basics, and we've let the business side totally just go their own way. And so if we're really serious about doing something in Aggieville, we can fix up the front door with a lot of public money, but that still leaves the back door dirty, trashy, leaking grease, overflowing dumpsters. So if we're going to fix up the back door also, it's going to take the city, I think, pushing, because I don't think we can count on the businesses to do that. There are always going to be objections for, for reasons not to do it. I am concerned about the billing process, I'm not excited about the city taking that on, and I don't care if we contract it out and the people involved have to pay for the service. You know, there's got to be a way that the city doesn't have to take on the responsibility for everything. We're not, people complain about government, but they don't want to do it themselves, they want the city to do it. And so there's this conflict all the time about who's going to do what, and then when it comes down to it, then they complain to the city commissioners and to the city staff. So, do you know how many customers, trash customers there are in Aggieville? Does anybody know?
There are 100 businesses.
100 businesses?
One comment I would make, not all buildings even have room for receptacle. There are buildings that come all the way to the alley, and they go all the way to the sidewalk, I mean, there's just, they're working with the adjacent business or owner in some circumstances to handle their trash. So from a community perspective, without, there is that one comp, one compactor, one trash receptacle that is in a lease with basically kites, but even then, they're out trying to solicit others to participate in that lease. So there, there is a bit of a consolidation going on there, we're involved with that because it's in our parking lot. So to a degree, some of that consolidation and, and agreement has occurred over the years. I give Robbott a hard time because, I think his predecessor signed the agreement, so it's been a while, but it, it did occur at one time, but some of those efforts could obviously come out of this as well.
I don't want to see the city become the trash provider. I, I think there's a role for our ordinances here, and not everybody's going to like it, but if we have to have uniformity, that's the only way we can achieve it. We can't achieve it, we've seen by asking, let's say, requesting. The, but if we're going to fix up the alleys and spend money back there, then we have to insist on some of these things, so I'm willing to do that. Anyway, I, I just, I think that I've said enough, thanks.
Thank you.
You know, I think all the commissioners, even though we're all talking about some type of government, taking some responsibility in all of this, mainly because it's also city infrastructure, as you pointed out, I think if there are, if this is the city infrastructure, we do need to take responsibility for how it is taken care of, so it doesn't continue to happen, and that's what I heard from everybody here. So I think, of course, working with, with the businesses would be front and center, I think that's what we've been trying to do from, for the whole plan, for the whole vision of Aggieville. And there are some businesses, I don't know, like Mark was saying about Blue Stem, I don't know who uses which receptacle in the back, and if there's more of those conversations, more about consolidating and where they want to go with it, but mainly keeping it safe, keeping it clean, and making sure that our infrastructure is also being taken care of. It should be appealing to any visitors coming into town that want to visit Aggieville, and some type of enforcement. I don't know what that enforcement looks like, but certainly I want to look at more options in that area. With the new garage coming, I don't know if there would be receptacles even in the garage, or if they would be around the garage, or how that would look, and so some of those areas that go farther beyond. But yeah, I think, I don't know what the timeline on this is either, so I would like to know a little bit more about that.
Thank you.
Okay, so I don't know, I guess to sum up here, it looks like, you know, we, we sort of agree that we should take a look at some of the codes, and we can do some of the cleanup there, and then the other side of it is, of course, the infrastructure, like lights, security, those kind of things, but not get into the, you know, indirect billing and getting into the billing business. And then the other thing is to ask, ask Dennis at Aggieville to continue working with the group and see if you can reach any agreements on consolidation without compromising security issues or things of that nature. Does that sound about right?
I think we got it.
I think we have enough to, to work on. Obviously, there's not a clearly defined route for exclusive or non-exclusive, but I hear improvements to provide some more regulatory environment, and I heard the speakers say that they're open to doing that too, so we'll certainly engage on that aspect of things.
Okay, then we can move on to the next item on the agenda, which is commission training.
Well, Katie's going down, just the framework for this is, it's unusual where we have an election and we don't have a new commissioner, that's, or a new person that's never been a commissioner. And so when, after the election, I spoke to the, the incumbents that were victorious and congratulated them, and, and I spoke to the, the newcomer that's been a commissioner, and I talked about, you know, maybe we should have a little different orientation program for everybody and, and have a refresher, and, and everybody seemed to think that that was probably a good idea, and, and we certainly plan to give Commissioner-elect Motta some other discussion. We've made some changes since he has served, and, and we don't need to have you all involved in that process, but there are some, several things, and, and we've touched on a lot of these during, when we did the candidate orientation with all the candidates, but this goes a little bit deeper, and, and Katie's done a good, some good research, it gives us some things to think about, you know, we don't have a, a formal policy, and I know she's going to refer to several, and, and maybe we should, and, and I'm not saying we need all those details tonight for discussion, but there's a lot to, to cover and keep track of, and especially in this social media electronic age, when, when all of you want to get on and, and chat about something, there's some issues with that. And so I appreciate her doing some research and providing some of this initial background, and look forward to some of your feedback as to what else we'd like to cover. And there's, the thought here is that we would just take these opportunities when we get them, to do some refresher work, and it could certainly extend past when the oath of offices are given as well. So that's kind of some background for it, and we appreciate that very much.
I was just going to hop in and thank John and Cynthia for presenting.
Sure.
And then I was going to end the Zoom meeting, I just didn't want to do that without addressing them, so I'm going to close that out. So thank you, and we will be in touch.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, and Mr. Motta, our, our new commissioner. I know I am mindful of the fact that it is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, and that we all probably have other things we want to be doing, but I really do appreciate, as Ron said, an opportunity to talk to you tonight. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly and get some, you have a lot of materials, I'm not going to go over all those materials, it's more things for you to take with you and think about over the next several weeks. But what we're doing tonight is, I'm just going to go do some background training on kind of the foundations of the way we operate. In the interim, Ron has offered, the city manager has offered to train Mr. Motta on anything that he needs to know, to catch up on what Manhattan's been doing since his last term, but also if any of the other commissioners have an interest, you know, you can let the manager's office know, and then departments are always available. December 14th is another work session, and we're actually going to, I'm kind of setting the table tonight for that meal that'll be coming December 14th, we can talk about some more detail about how we're running our meetings and the procedures that we would be following, should be following, or could be following to make this more efficient for everyone. And then the last thing, as Ron previewed, is that we would like to make training more a part of your service. We have some specific items, we know that routine training would be helpful, it might be something as simple as five minutes at a briefing session, or if the commission has certain things that they have more interest in, you can let us know and we can schedule that. The first thing, this is, I just want to say that the training tonight is actually based upon the League's materials, so all credit to the League, and the items that are bolted there, which you don't even need to read, they're just, there's some bullet points, it's really small, but because they're all in your hands, they were in your packet. I'm providing these because I think it's important for y'all to know that the League suggests this for newly-elected officials, but also as annual training for all elected officials. And there's a reason that they revisit these things every year. This is, tonight is the most recommended, the typical approach to training elected officials across the state of Kansas, nothing radical here at all. So I don't need to tell you, but in case anyone, we have one or two viewers in the audience, we do have a city commission, manager, form of government. We are governed by that form, the laws of the state of Kansas, and we have a municipal code. Chapter two is our administration that talks about your roles, and chapter two is very old and needs to be updated. But the, are, one of our main things tonight to talk about is to remember that our legal and practical roles, the commission has a different role than city staff, that adhering to those roles impacts all of our operations, our initiatives and actions, and the length of our meetings, which we're going to talk about tonight. So this is just a visual, you all know this, but it's just a visual of what that form of government looks like, where the voters elect the commission, the commission hires the manager, but the manager hires all city staff, and the manager is over the city staff. This is included in your packet, this is a League, it's a League graphic, but I did modify it for Manhattan. It is a great picture of the difference between the role of the city commission- It is a great picture of the difference between the role of the City Commission and the staff. And I think it's, we all like the airport, so the airport analogy is really fun. But what it's showing you, and it's, there's a lot on here, but the green bar that's about two-thirds of the way down, that's showing you the portion of the Commission responsibility for those things versus staff responsibility. And as you get closer to the runway, which is our day-to-day operations, that share is predominantly the staff. So this is a, this is a neat graphic, but it's basically to reflect that the governing body, there are five of you. We need you in your role. There's only five of you. There are hundreds of city staff members on the ground, on the runway, doing the everyday work. And so we're trying to each ensure we're fulfilling our roles. And this is from the League, using the League slide. I'm going to just, this is just the kinds of actions that you take. You know these things. It's the ordinances that you adopt, the resolutions, the rates and fees, you approve appointments. I only circled the word financing, but obviously the budget is one of the biggest initiatives that you have every year because it determines how the city operates for the next year. And then you authorize contracts. I think it's really important in here, too, that we reiterate that the governing body is a policymaking body. You set the policy. And this is really interesting to me. Again, this is all the League's materials here. But they, the governing body gives direction to the staff in votes made in public meetings, not individually. So I want to talk about that a little bit more. What I have incorporated here, and there is a document called Fifty-Two Tips for Successful Professional, excuse me, Public Service, which is part of the League's packet. And I've pulled out a couple of those things as themes so that if you don't have a chance to read through all this, you're kind of getting the high points. So the first theme that accompanies that slide is that you set a policy and long-term vision. And so the League has some recommendations that I think we need to think about as we go into 2022. We need to establish more written policy statements. And then we use those policy statements to make our decisions. Policy statements in writing are really important because the public knows how we function and staff knows your direction. So there's going to be, there's a recommendation to do more of that as a governing body. And then also the overarching point of this, of this theme is that to think long-term. So short-term decisions might be great, but the governing body, you are really the visionaries for our organization. And so you should be focusing on the future and rather than the short, kind of the short-term gains. Theme two that I want to highlight is acting as a team. I know this is one of the hardest things because each of you are leaders in your own right. You have your own priorities that are important to the community. But our system of government, and this system of government throughout the state of Kansas, is not a team of one. So you can't, we can't respond to that. We have to respond to what the majority wants. So as a practical example, if there is an ordinance before this body, and in first reading, one Commissioner really wants a change to it, and there's no support from it, from two other Commissioners, the majority, the team, then that change not occurring is not a failure of staff. It's that the team, that wasn't the path the team wanted to take. That's something that we really need to get back to. And the way what we're going to, we can help getting back to that is adopting procedures that help facilitate that. And the facilitation is to get, to build that consensus and to understand where the team really wants to go. Another thing that the governing body, or excuse me, that the League recommends for the governing body is this last point, is that once a majority decision is made, to respect that position. It doesn't mean, you may not be able to defend it, but at least explain it. In other words, you know, you are in an office that we have a lot of respect for and you're providing of yourselves to this community, but support the decision of the body and support the, support the process to the extent you can. The other thing, the other thing from the League's presentation is that you're elected to look after the interests of the whole city. So this is, and these are interesting tips. Again, this is all taken from the League's training materials, but this is some interesting points. For one thing is, you know, don't be misled by strong demands of special interest groups who want it done now their way. And I thought this is an interesting addition. You may be hearing from the wrong people. I think what's, you know, I've been at the city since 2003. I've been at a lot of these meetings. And I can tell you that most of the decisions that you make are difficult. And it's a balancing of interests of parties constantly. And it's up to the governing body to weigh the interests of the parties and to weigh the bigger needs of the community in making its decisions. And the League suggests that as well by saying that, you know, when you're looking for the public interest, you're balancing those personal rights and property interests and acknowledging that possible harm to a few is to the good of many. Not everyone can win, not everyone's going to win. One thing I like about local government, and why I wouldn't want to be a state or federal government attorney, is that we are focused on practical solutions and we're focused on nonpartisan issues. So the partisan ideologies, they're not, I appreciate that they're not part of our decision-making. Instead, we're looking at, we're looking at balancing all the needs of the community and just coming out with a practical solution. Frankly, local government probably has a much greater impact on most people's lives than the higher levels of government. So we have really important roles. So this one is part of that, dovetails off that as well. But this, this is a theme throughout these Fifty-Two Tips, and that is to have respect for each other, staff and the public. Part of this, and this is going to preview the next training, is that we have decorum and we follow a process at our meetings so that we have a, we're, you know, honoring our offices. I think number 24 I put in here just to preview our pay study because I didn't write this. It is from the League. But they're emphasizing the need to retain your competent key employees, pay them well, trust their professional judgment, and recognize their authority and responsibilities. The League has developed these tips after years of representing cities of all sizes. So these are things that all cities can, can have as part of their, you know, as part of their experience. But what they're saying to us is these are the ways that we can be the most successful. One thing I want to highlight on here, because it's one of the takeaway notes, is number 39, is to expect and respect citizen complaints, but have a way to effectively deal with them. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in the end. The last theme that's in these documents is to be engaged but focused. So there's a lot, I hope you will read number, that document, the Fifty-Two Tips for Successful Public Service, because I'm really hitting on it fast. But I would say about 15 of them talk about your own leadership mindset and your own leadership practices, which are really, really important and obviously inform how you serve in your role. But this one, I would say, be engaged but focused. It talks, there's a lot in there about being, being sure that you've learned what you can, that you're asking questions, that you're reviewing materials. Number seven is important, to take that budget preparation seriously. Again, that is the most important policy that you adopt all year. And then, but then at the same time, to focus your attention and priorities on the right things. Don't make quick judgments. We don't have to, number 12 says avoid crisis management. So part of it is to have a strategy and have a plan for how you're dealing with the operations of the city. So again, I'm mindful of a holiday week here. So I'm going really fast, but I want to, so I only have a couple of slides left. And then we'll open it up to any other comment from staff before you guys might want to add some information. But here's some things to think about. What I've told you is the way, the framework, the foundation for how we're supposed to function, which is we're a policymaking body where staff implements those policies. One thing that we, from the city of Manhattan, that we could do to improve the way that we operate is to adopt a governing body procedural manual. And I already have the email drafted. You'll get it later tonight. The League actually has a small book, like the STO, the Standard Traffic Ordinance, that a community can adopt by, just incorporate by reference, and that can become their governing body manual. Most of the first-class cities have their own manuals. They don't use this League one, but the small cities use the League one. And what that does is it adopts a parliamentary procedure. And then those cities follow it. And so the reason that these two things are important for us to think about as we go into the next meeting, get some feedback from you on whether you want to pursue this, is to think of how this will benefit your service and how we all use our time. And we'll talk about that a little bit more. But the other thing, chapter two, administration, was probably from the 1940s. It's wildly outdated. If we have an emergency and the Commissioners, we don't have a majority to operate due to some disaster, I'd like to let you know that unfortunately, the city attorney has to sit on the board or on the governing body. That shouldn't happen, obviously. The city attorney is not supposed to be in that role. That's an antiquated provision. So we have some things we need to look at. In fact, early in the pandemic, we looked at our emergency government provisions and realized they were outdated, and they're part of this administration chapter. So I'd recommend that we take that time to look at that as well. I have a consistent process for responding to constituents. So this is something the League talks about and that other cities have that's really important. Let's say you get an email from a constituent who says, I'd like to see this ordinance changed. Maybe you get 10 emails on the same subject out of, you know, 55,000 people. How should, how would you like it as the governing body for that kind of request to be handled? What the League recommends and what other cities often do is they forward that to staff, and staff works with the person. Even if that person is still dissatisfied with that response, it doesn't come to the City Commission for any type of action or input unless the team, unless the Commission has said this is a priority of ours and has decided when that should occur. So I, I'm not suggesting any specific process. I'm only suggesting that when we meet again in December, that if everyone gives that some thought as to how we could best process those things, it would be helpful to know that. Because the last one is something we've struggled with over the last several years, and that's the team process for adding items to the agenda or using staff resources. It's kind of evolved. There's different ways that that's been handled throughout the years. But it's most typical, if you adopt a governing body procedure, where you establish a process where that item, the way that it's vetted, so that staff resources are only used if it's something the team wants to pursue. So it's not about limiting the constituents' access at all to any, or to get something done. It's about understanding that we govern for all, everyone in the community. We have a lot of operations that are already going. And so that if we were to respond to every single email or every set of 10 or 20 emails, that we'd be popping around all over instead of staying, you know, focused on our operations. If, if there is some type of, something that needs to be done, I absolutely think we would pursue it. But we need to have a process to vet that and not just kind of a random response to it. So what does all this mean for you? What is the benefit to you of us performing our roles the way that they were designed and us adopting some policies and procedures that we will follow? I mean, it allows us to perform our roles. So basically, it's the right thing to do. But really, more importantly, from a practical perspective, it's going to make us more efficient. It's going to make these meetings more efficient. Some of the bigger first-class cities with their agenda, they actually assign an amount of time. So it'll say, this item is 30 minutes, this item is 20 minutes, this item is 40 minutes. And in doing that, they're, they're, they have a schedule that they're sticking to. It's predictable, but it's also a service to the public in a lot of ways. Because if their item is fourth, they're not here at seven o'clock and it comes up at nine. So it provides more transparency to the public and how the item will be considered and when they could participate. Doing these things, it prioritizes and maximizes use of resources. If our resources are being used to go in five different directions, then we're not using them the best way that we can for all of you. So we would like to be able to focus on those priorities. The other nice thing is that we can be more strategic in our approach and action. And I want to highlight again that having a process for how you get an item considered or a process for how these meetings go that the public can look at, that's helpful to the public. It's predictable, it's consistent, and it's fair. So it's not just about us saving time on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. It's also about the public knows how to interact in a predictable way, and it doesn't depend upon who they contact, when, and what way. So a couple of parting thoughts, just to reiterate, is that we do have some upcoming training. I've already talked about it. The only thing I want to highlight at the end is your January Commission retreat. So one way to, and this is something the Manager's Office has done every year, but one way as you prepare for that is to think about how do you want us to govern in '22 and beyond? And remember that in '22, the game plan already primarily exists. When the budget is adopted and the projects are, and the programs are underway prior to '22, a lot of '22 is already scheduled. So when you're looking at what '22 and you look at the whole year and what you've already committed to, then you can see if there's anything, if you have any room to fill in, anything, if there's team priorities to fill in, and if they meet any of your strategic goals. And I have to say, Jared helped me with this. One of our strategic goals, 2.4, is to adopt policies and procedures for the City Commission and for our boards and committees so that we operate more efficiently and effectively. Another aspect of every Commission, every annual Commission tree, is we're not just looking at that year, we're looking at the years ahead so that we're laying the groundwork for the things that you do want to do in the out years. So that is all I have. I know that's a lot. I just was trying to go, be mindful of your time. I, I just want to say again, I have all these materials in your packet. And you'll be receiving an email with links to Topeka, Overland Park, Derby, and other cities, and then also the League's Example Code of Procedures. So you can see what's very standard. You can see the components to these things. And then we can, if the Commission provides that input, we can work toward establishing those and following those so we can serve our community better.
Yeah, thanks, Katie. I appreciate that. And I think, I think it is important to get some of that written down because we've, we've changed a few things over the years and we're sort of following them, but we haven't really codified it. And I would like to see that happen, especially like when you were talking about staff time. We've tried to use coordination meeting this year to say, okay, what are we going to put on the agenda? And as a group, we've decided, you know, if there were three of us that wanted it on there, it went on there. If there wasn't, then we didn't waste staff time. And I do, I would like to see that codified because that's important. And we may want to do something similar on board appointments. Because I know, you know, a number of us here have served as mayor, at least four. And that's always been a pain, find those. And so I'm thinking of a procedure where maybe two weeks before you make the recommendation as mayor, you throw it out to everybody on the Commission so they can look at it and say, okay, I wasn't aware of this, whatever. And then that would help make those boards more transparent. So, so I'm looking forward to this. I think it's a good plan.
I don't know what you expect for feedback, but I do think it's, this is a good idea. I know there are, I think the Board of Education does this, where there are timeframes for how long something, even the Riley County Commissioners probably do it as well. I think those are tentative, and if it goes longer, it's okay. But for example, last week's meeting, none of, I don't, I didn't anticipate it going as long as it did, but I felt the information we were discussing and the thoroughness of it was very important to our discussion. So I don't want to take that out feeling like we have to stick to a timeframe, but it's a tentative timeframe. I think that that's okay to look at. But yeah, I'm open to looking at updating our processes and procedures and making it more predictable. Like you said, there is a certain level of comfort when people know what to expect. And future City Commissioners know what to expect when they come onboard. Processes are extremely important to that piece. And just the decorum, the leadership, how we handle ourselves amongst ourselves and in the public when we represent everybody in our community and make sure their voices are heard from our departments, but also from the City Commission.
I'm supportive of what Yusha and Wen have just said. For example, the board appointments, there are several boards that have some pretty weighty responsibility. And we need to give those appointments some criteria and not just somebody that happens to apply and says one sentence, I want to serve on a board. You know, we need some people with some expertise in certain areas. I'm thinking of the Housing Authority, the Urban Area Planning Board, just some areas where people need some knowledge heading into it. And I, we've talked about that for three years. And I'm interested in moving that forward somehow. So, you know, and not just stalling and don't have time and oh, we never get to it. So there are, and as you say, I haven't looked at chapter two. So I have to confess that I will be. And, but I am supportive of bringing outdated policies up to date. But keeping in mind, too, that we have to worry about transparency and our citizen engagement and involvement along the way, too. So those are important to me, too. Thank you.
Katie, where does, sorry about this. Where does, like if we were to discuss the ARPA funds, and I understand our budget is set for next year. When you say review 2022 game plan that already exists, a big chunk of, that is not in our budget are the ARPA funds. So where would that fall in all of this?
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner, already. The ARPA funds are such an unusual gift, I guess, to municipalities. Obviously, that's something that, let's just say that that note, that it's the plan that already exists is when we don't have, you know, millions of federal funds to work with as well. I think, and the City Manager may weigh in, but they'll talk about that as part of it. I just, I'm not saying that that wouldn't be discussed there. I'm just saying typically,
of it, I just, I'm not saying that that wouldn't be discussed there, I'm just saying typically, the year that you're having the retreat, that year is primarily set, but I'll, I don't know if the goals and...
My sense is, there's going to have to be a, a work session on ARPA funds quickly in January, February, because you're going to have the majority of the Commission that is going to want to do that, it's just that simple.
And I agree with that, and I did send you an email today relative to that, which talks about all the other things that influence that. So, you know, and a lot of that, if you would have decided six months ago to spend your 21 share, now you have these new rules, that's kind of hard to undo. So those are just some of the trade-offs, and agreeing about process and what aspects of it, and that we want to follow. So all those are pertinent, and yeah, Katie's reference there is really, it's the budget that's already been approved, and the CIP items, everything else that you're planning to do, so that, that work schedule to accomplish that spending plan is already in the works and in the middle of the stream. Now, you all know we have a lot of different projects coming up, and there's a ton of grant programs out there. So at the same time, part of our goals is to leverage our local funds as much as we can, and we've done a pretty good job of that with other grants. And so sometimes those come up in that own, beyond the budget process, that we will be beneficial to the community if we were able to land it. So clearly, those are things we need to know about, but if there's additional information, which there typically is, that you all want us to focus on, that isn't part of that budget, then those are the things we kind of need to key on, and we've done some of that in the past. But trying to refine that process, I think, would be helpful.
All right, I guess on that note, you know, we can finish in under two hours tonight. So meetings adjourned, thank you.